Be seated everybody. I will hand over now to the director of the programme, Mr Tulani Chifuta. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Sanbona. Molue. Abshé. Dumelang. Inda. Eh... Did I say Khuya Moré? Thank you very much for taking time off your busy schedules to this morning. Eh... In a public hearing of the High Level Panel. And eh... This is a long day and hard day. We had another group that joined us yesterday. And thank you very much for that. My name is Tulani Chifuta, one of the panel members. The panel that is here to listen to you today is a panel that is led by the chairperson, President Khalima Mutlala. Let's welcome him. In the panel, he is joined by Judge Pili. We have Professor Hesh. We have Professor Muthien. We have Dr Terence Nombembe. We have Mama Bridget Mabata. We have Reverend Damon. And we also have Dr Anika Klassen. This is the panel that is here to listen to you. I would just like to make an announcement that we do have interpretation devices that can access different languages. Those who need the interpretation devices can access them at the back. We do have English in the service. We also have Isikosa, Sissu Tu, CPAD, Chivenda and so on. You just need to take your ID and then they will give you the device. We will read out the channels of those interpretation devices. At this stage, I would like to take this opportunity and invite the chairperson of the High Level Panel, President Khalima Mutlala, to come and address us. Thank you very much. Eh, thank you very much eh program director and member of the panel. Dumelang. Sanbona. Demacheron. Bashumi. Eh... Khuya Moré. Molue. Di... Di Tukuni. Eh... Siabulela. Ubani kwasli, ubanati eh... Namtsange. Because we are a panel... It's independent panel. This panel is not an extension of government. It is also not of members, sitting members of parliament. But it was established by the speakers' forum. All these members have eh other responsibilities in their lives. But they've accepted this task of assessing legislation eh... focused on four broad areas. We were mandated by the speakers' forum to assess impact of legislation or the laws that have been passed since 1994 eh in four broad areas. First area of focus is poverty, unemployment and inequality. The second area of focus is creation of an equitable distribution of wealth. And the third area of focus is the land question. In other words, land reform, land restitution and redistribution as well as security of tenure. And the fourth area of focus is nation building and social cohesion. So it may be better for me to speak to you in vernacular rather than to speak to you in English. Eh... Because kuna bantu amatlaye kuna matlaye okazana apa. Na lwa tuwaba hulu mona. Arwa tluli sokodis. Kiwa tlaori ki laki seori. Han, mo sebe tiwa panele na koufe. Recupilweh ore. Reshevisiseh ore. Ibe melawiye na eh salé ipasiswa motloa kan 1994. Nahibe itusa ba tuvaro nasichabasa ro nahuore. Mapiloa bo na ah tokafaleka pa eh inti ibarwadi samurwalu ona. Ay soroeli baujarile eh kanakwea nea eh muso kopo wa ore ibe mapilo alo na kamcholepila. Ah lebo na elehore. Atuka feti ka pa eh hunte o twaana fele. Now hui tui reshebore. Nahibe melao iya tusana eh ho keta mufuma. Ore. Nahibe tusahore hobelime sebeiti. Ba na ba twa tadi kolu. Ba fumaneme sebeiti ba chono o sebeiti. Ba tla ba chono i piri salutu samalapabo. Lehore nahibe melawiye na eh iya tusah ore ba tuvaro na lebo na ba ikute totu ibile balukuluhi. Eh dualeka ba ibana ya ro na ya eh Republic of South Africa. Obani ro na nmlerohola. Ba tuadbunta atewa ro na ba nyavari haanali katiba. Kalapeng honali tuloyaye onamo ibewa. Obani katiba ey enuine somkiwa mona ey salé. Impa ha kopa nalele khowa. Katiba ey enuwa inkai kenyele hafe. Juale erhaba dumedisa na ba kopa na elebun tati. Ngabutahore nantehoya juwa butwa lak. Ey enuwa kanete rehatele tui mona kanete leki sholekatiba zarro na dihatele. So eh hui tui reshevisiseh ore nahibe melao eh utusahore ba tuvaro na balukuluwe kanetutukuluwe ba yutwelebo. Me lehore. Ha ele mona na hayaro na enali muruo. Nahibe ba nali bo na eh hunali seba sifuma namuru mona wanaharo na na. Lehore ba tuva buruna hay salé ba duda mu ba duda. Ba na ba tuha ilore eh holokala orba benima simu kaika eh mopulaingene nganhandle jualo juale. Juale eh bu ngata babo na tulutene ba dula hotona mo urube tien eh ba twa diwabo na ba ile ba tuoswa mo. Ba yobe wa tu donzedi. Ore nata ba yenayale fatsehore kilama. Eh ibe melawiye na ey sente ifitisi tui ki parlament ya ro na. Itusa ba tuvaro na ore eh na ha ihu ihukise tui hobengba yo. Ka pa inti idumela hori. Ba tuvaro na ba smaplasing eh ningning tuisena li eh ba tuva ba chaba ba irekile. Bo na ba ba tuswa ba tipe lotwa eh kowamona. La elehore. Ba twa diwabo na ba nansoba dula monu. Ma vikia bo na parube tsumono eh so melawiye na hui tui reke reshevisiseh. Lehore nahibe eh hare reba tuva South Africa. Reho na udula re lukuluhi le ka pa hunte weta halantotene ta hori. Ningning uke ba re no eh mutukionu. Ube kase ngapi la. Na amatraye ko emakaya eh umwazi. Wa kwasliwa uba eh istunzi se se trebu. Sikule omwazi na wema wumtwa na utuni abutwa no. Amba wio beka mwazlo katata. Wuyayazi nda wiyayayo eh lo omwazi. Goba ituele istunzi. Sotada. Ke pa ka etibana na na ba tu upino ma ama polisa apa imkuwa tui no be lungu. Ubo ne lo amwazutatu anji fa we kwa pe. Intoenzuka. Asibe bo twa. Hebe guzanimpilo uba ne. Eh mfon din kunja ni kuha amba ja. Ati omne wehoo. Sikelasiwe mfon din kelasweni mwazi yetu. Goba ipenile kwa pe. So si tike limitedo. Kufunega si jomisise. Goba eh sugabo 94 abantu bakuti ba kumle. O kusvuntu nduka. Inkaba inyani na limitedo eseli pasisiwe. Eh ya neti sikuti impilos abantu bakuti zepetele. Norma na yo yaengeza pa lo amtwa lo eh okuba amagri. So lilongeke eh ipanelé it divide tui into three groups. Kukoi working group one. Ekualasela limitedo eh le kanyekanyi. E jonge nenuka eh ipa vati unemployment and inequality eh as well as creation of and equitable distribution of wealth. Working group one it jonge ne. Limitedo eh eh irrelevant. Ule ondawa. It working group two yonah it jonge ne ne zo mtsaba. Goba seasuka itabi. Baku itabi loguti omtsaba ubuyele. Evantwi. Working group three ilé jonge ne nation building and social cohesion. Itetuka ubroso bo jenga bantu eh basemzansi. Eh inkaba eh bu petele na. Now namtsangeke sisa otala ngani. Goba in jongo eyetuka ba tinasi pulapule kunu. Sive uba eh nizivanja limitedo ngabiyanin ekrisa. Norma na yo yaengeza pa eh eubeni eh ubomu beenu eh bu ngapi petele. So eh singa tianga treshage. Siabulela kwakona uba nibeko eh. Sitanduka eh ka umpaka ma uteti. Unga kwekwelezi. Ngakwekwelezi uyeno. Eh mtkambi. Witi tejengobinjalo. Msebe tui tu pulapula anji. Snamazee ba mabili. Mlo momnye anji swazozoteaake. Eh jengoba nteta anji ntetelebo onke eh ama lungwe panel. Eh kotwa inszebe zetu zivulegilege. Eh sizo pulapulakunu. Mandibuleleke ndinga eh tijtreshaleto. Ingos.
Thank you very much eh Mkulua for the lead input. As we indicated that yesterday we were here. One gentleman stood up and said, "We want the panel to speak less and listen more. And allow the people who took the effort to come here to speak more." So that is the advice we are following today. The programme we are going to follow is that there are organised formations that have expressed interest to make inputs in the different working groups that the chairperson was talking about. We will allow those organisations to come and make their inputs first across all the three working groups. After which we are going to open the platform for everyone and anyone to raise their hand and be allowed an opportunity to express their views. Is that acceptable? Thank you very much. Of those who expressed interest to participate or make inputs in working group one, may we please invite eh Mr Patrick Solimaswangani to come and make the first input. To be followed by Ms Nzoaki Mukiele. If she can also come closer. Are they here? Is Ms Nzoaki here as well? Ms Nzoaki is not here. We are going to move on after this presentation. Let's welcome Mr Maswangani.
Good morning everyone. Eh honourable members, distinguished guests, the community members, our stalwarts and all protocol observed. Eh we all know that the youth unemployment remains as a critical problem in our country. Millions of young people are suffering in the streets of South Africa having no one to hear their cry. This question, this question, the basic eh condition of Employment Act eh seventy-five of nineteen ninety-seven, does it accommodate the future of our youth? Especially our community where I'm coming from. I'm coming from Ivory Park, which is the city of Johannesburg. We find lots of young people standing in street smoking yaupé, unemployed, struggling to access education, struggling to access things that are important that can actually move the nation forward. And we ask ourselves, are these acts relevant in our time? Are these acts implemented accordingly? We started NPOs like Ivory Park Youth Talent as one of the changes that we want to make in the community. To say, "Let's start NPOs. Maybe the government will hear us." But the response we got from the government, it didn't show an interest that the government is willing to assist us. Because we were told in in departments eh in the departments that we have approached that our organisation is still new, so we cannot access funds. The question is, where should we get our funding if those departments cannot eh help us to access funds? So then we we address the issues that are affecting our community in our own way. Basically, what we we actually saying, we're saying to 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 the to the government and the people who eh implement the constitution of the country, can it look down to people from the townships? Can they look at us as young people? See, we also important in this eh change eh corner. Because what we see is we see the government that goes to the people when it's time to vote. But when we need the change and save is delivered, it's hard to find. Coming to a text eh the text the Text Incentive Act of twenty-six, twenty thirteen, we feel that young people are not informed with such act. And it becomes a question, where are those eh incentive? How are they being accessed? How exactly? What we have actually realised is that the government makes decision on their own, in their own space, and they decide for us. Are we are we not that much important to the government? That in the way that they make eh acts that they they are not accommodating us, but they are written in books. But when we look at them practically, we can't see them. Unfortunately eh honourable members, this is the shorter eh challenge that I've actually highlighted. And I would like eh the panel and our stalwarts to actually take eh this resolution forward and give us an immediate eh response. So we understand how we're going to take our nation forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We request that with every presentation that is made, you make a submission of your inputs eh into the tables there. And eh I would also like to announce that we have been joined by one of our colleagues eh who, when we started, we could not introduce because she was taking eh a radio interview. We have one of our panel members who have joined us, Dr Olive Shisana. Please greet them. Thank you very much. Is Ms Nzoaki Mukiele here? If not here, we move on to those organisations that expressed interest on working group two. And we shall start by inviting Ms Nomsa Silibano. Is she here? Thank you. Eh Malepane Tamaha will follow. Mr Budi Chagache will be next. Ms Teresa from Legal Resource Centre. And Ms Tandil Zamine. Those will be our presenters on working group two if they can be ready, so that we take a speaker after a speaker. Over to you.
Yali dumedisa. Khuya kadituloka cholekana ki dumedisa le community. Libitola kage Nomsa Silibano ki mulimi. Ko esranja koranfante. Le fatsehle ki dula imolone kilaka parlamenté. Ba neba re lisedi temarhonano baseseba re dizedi ketika. Bo tata aboroko panale bo nele re lebalimi. Food security hay risiteli. Re governmenté erilebezi. Chava chava ituhore basadi ba temba ba limang. Ha ituhore chanseba ro thokomele. Resokala kaditrekteré resokala kacholema. Resokodisa ki dibilize haiza eh electricity. Renaleba alaba chanseba ro khudise. Barilebezi. Bo reba rebeile mojaga bariki ketika. Re ba thokomeleze ele fatse. Maribo na ba ba tla horzo zotledete kero na gorre patelele lidipilize. Reneli le mapoli sakarro eh honali ditso oti. Baba tamba tu vandalisa di tipi ze moridula motengoro waena chanse riske kabopelo ba haro. Obaluanze ubuledi caseze. Leze ne basadi saile murako kachore ba bua hori. Sambody samwe ko freina he sampani ba tshainuwa hori ba tu dila na le crime erna lo ne SD pharmacy koranfante. Kaspe hay risiteli. Ba ba harke ana ba reza ba re yulis for three years from more redla chofal eh opportunity ta hori kalent. Ba tla manze ba tchinchame lao. The next eh ba rebizaba reyamola oh o tchinchile. The twenty-five percentene ba re tepiste one. Mo mula wa ba ne ba re yulis from there. There is twenty-five percenter goli fanyo ne beko eh value of the product. Ikrye waki ba tu ba 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 iti sambody ko governmenté. Ho se iti motuneva wai tol. I'm one of hori. Ha kisu opa in the rural development akai tol. Esen nakiliwa ne. I think re close to ten or twenty ba limiko ranfante in basai tol. And then ba tla kade recapping. Leo ne hayara benefita ba no rabona hori. Nsereli ignorile esbalimi. Recapekiye. Re yedi itze re ba tili di strategic partner di putze off. Re ba tili di monto di putze off. The reason for that ba tchataro na ya business planner lai patola ki ma. Ha ba fitako rural developmenté ba ba isha from pillar to post. Ah hona ba tla horo batel. And then on top of more recapeki euleano haserikrele send. From two thousand and eight till now in sekilemo famo. Isaac azanga karewa le spate for rock. Oh kohore everything I do it myself. Ke ikeze tza hori ki kwaneli wa naka chonanar. I'll never be a farmer because holy a farmer we are impoverished. The government doesn't care for you. You are there alone to strike for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please do make a submission of the input you have made, ma. Over to you.
Thank you honourable members. Um honourable Zamine. Eh inzokulmanayo ipa vati alleviation. Eh okokala izintesla nganazosi ba nenkina ye chenda. Asili ngani ngobilili gotwa oh baba ibona oktwa laka lukutimaku. Kufunega imsebenzi. Ibo na ba pegelewa pambili jenga bantu abape kutu oh baba. Ibo na basapota imdin. Yebo abanyo baba ya isapota imdin. Gotwa ksewo onka makaya oh baba basapota. Uto lukutu baba jengoba engezwa. Ifest preference ukutu jengoba baba. Utolugutu ba ba njongo ba engezwa, ifest preference, okutu njongo ba ba. Apegelele ikae. Oh mama ba ya supega ngoba, abanyo ba ba ya guazu kutu ba wapegelele amakaya ba. Ngorotoa ksyobo onke, abawa apegelelae. Ogusbili, kube indaba yo kuti, oh mama, njenga ba to, amaskils. Abazange, oh mama, ba funde, gale amaskil ngoba, oh mama, bebe pegelelu kuti. Oh mama, omtuasekaya, okfunegue, apege ikae. Oh mama, utolugutu ba ba ya ba guazu kutu ba funde, gale. Ba tole amaskils, neba nga lo kuti. Oh mama, uyena opage ismosase kaya, aklineni nga guazoezini zinto ukuzenza. No kuti, aguazu kusebenza laabe independent. Manjeke iloko kwenzo kutu, oh mama, i poverty, ibenini, kumpakatuwe tu ngoba. Songisakatu, oh mama, beku, oh mama, omtu opega galukutu, mama, i rouliake, isekishin. Ogusbili, ogokuti, i government, yes, akona ama, ama programs akona. But awafinyeleli, kumpakatiga, ale, because abaguazu kuti, aguazu kuti ama programs akona lana, abe effective enough. Utolugutu, nama ekona, yes, ama programs, but afinyelela, la ba, u, abantu kumpakatuwe tu, abaguazu kutu, ba tole ba guazu kutu la ama programs akon. Aguna follow up, aguna lutu, oktunuguti, yes, ama programs akon. Ngorotoa, iso implemento aganyelu, onto, eklineni, ayfinyeleli kumpakatu ngabe, mchambi, kumpakatu ngasiga, ale, now. Si shukuti, si teluguti, izinto eskona, eskala ngazo singo kumpakati. Azifinyelele, ke kube ne follow up from i government yetu. Ne age restriction nayo, iasbulala. Utolugutu, oh mama, mchambi, una umsebenzi awaziyo. Ngorotoa, ngendaba yo kuti, kune age restriction, abanyo jabantu anabetu, utoluguti, lana i age restriction, gutoa from 18 to 35. Kuba ingenga ngoba, gushkuti, maymshaya low, low age, agasa guazu, uklashega, ale, ngendaba ye age. Ogonye, kube indaba ye nepotism. Inepotism, utolugutu, mutu nama ngabuya klashega, mchambi, una wa maskils. But ngoba guna le sifose siko na, ba to betu kutu, uperelela omzalabake, uperelela umalumewake, or. Uperelele strobosake, or, umganoa kore. Na lokoki asbulala, kuyenzo kuti, i poverty, ina guazu kuti, mchambi. I, abantu basizagale ngoba, eklineni, nama eh, monye ena maskils. Aga guazu kfinyelela glo umsebenzo ngoba, agazi pambili gula ba, awibo na ba klashaya, agazi mundu. Ogonye, ke nokvilapa, naati koboluwe tu singo kumpakati, ezinyezze zinto sia vilapa. Norma, mchambi, ezinyinda oziko na, mchambi, kume nyezeluktuwa enda, one neti. Abanyo, nama ngamjela njukutu, namtsia njukuzo kulunya la, ezintesla tingati, nampakatu kutu sizazi. Abantu basalendin, agafunu guazina lutu, eklineni ke, i information ninga hambingendela, eh, right? Eh, abanyo, nksumsebenzi, agafuni etola. Ngorotoa, asikale ngokuti, inhlala ekon. Manje, inte engon kuti ke, ulmenueti agasize, kuo. I follow up, we, kuma programs akona. Ngoba, uma ama programs ekona, ngorotoa, utoluguti, i implemento aganye, eklineni, abantu abaguazu kfinyelela kua, ayiko i effective enough? Niya, bom.
Gyalidu, Hamonsama is. The honorable Chairperson of the High Level Panel. Honorable members of the panel. My name is Budi Chagache. I'm here to talk on behalf of the Rural Legal Trust. Although I'm not supposed to introduce the organization, please allow me to say that between the years 2000 and 2016, we have resolved up to so far almost 2,000 cases that came from the farms and the rural areas. Although we've been doing that job on a manual basis, but if you are interested in the work, the work that we do, please log on to our Rural Legal Trust Central Case Management, you'll find more about it. Today, this morning, we would like to talk to you about 2.7 million people who are fortunately citizens of South Africa. This figure is enough to establish the 10th province of South Africa, if you may allow me to say so. It is equivalent to the population of the Free State, you know? It is also equivalent to the Northern Province province. And it is equal to the number of people in Lesotho. So this is a very, very significant number of people that I would like to talk about. And these people are farm workers. They are farm dwellers, they are labor tenants, contract workers on farms. They are unemployed but who stay on the farms. They are the women, and they are children, and they are youth. They are called farm communities. The majority of them are faced with abject poverty. They are exposed to abuses without defending themselves. Their women, young women and children suffer the most. Those who are working are faced with unfair labor practices, health challenges, safety challenges, and constant eviction threats. Actual threats, evictions, they are also faced with such issues. But whilst their women workers are exempted to submissive and inferior wages. The employed on farms are treated badly. They have no unions to protect them. The majority of farm residents are unemployed due to the drought challenges, due to mechanizations and lack of skills. Their women and youth form again a bigger category of the unemployed. I must say on the onset that we do acknowledge though, that there's a significant number of people on farms also who are called farm owners, who are really doing their best to secure the tenure of their workers. But we also firstly need to indicate here that we would like to talk under Section 25 of the Constitution, perhaps including Section 27. We acknowledge the good intentions again behind the enactment of the extensions or extension of Security of Tenure Acts. We also acknowledge further the efforts in the Green Paper of 2011. Also the development of land tenure security policy in its entirety, along with its chapter on strengthening the relative rights of people working on commercial farms, which emanated into EST Amendment efforts. And these efforts took into consideration the gaps and tried to tighten them. But we say this morning, that is not enough. Because many evictions happen under the radar. Many evictions happen undetected. Many evictees do not know how to apply their rights. Or they do not have the means to ensure the right to stay on or to be provided another place of stay. When all this happens, they have no one else to call for help. Toll-free numbers of the department do not become handy at that dire stage. For instance, if you drive along the R24 and the R28, just outside Kruger's Dock, there's a place there called Talton and Marbeth. Along those roads are lots of informal settlements. And all these formal settlements unfortunately fall outside of the Haute M provincial urban development framework. So they receive no services at all. But the questions that we are asking ourselves are these. How did these structures develop? Where do dwellers of these sheks come from? All residents in and around Talton, Marbeth, up to including Stirkfontein and Mulderstreft, they come from farms. They have chosen to settle along provincial roads to be nearer peace jobs, domestic work, and small contracts offered by the wealthy of this intensive agriculture and conservation zone. And there, they offer their labor in return for exploitative remunerations that cannot be challenged. This pattern is the same in the Free State. Around Botaville, same. It is the same in the northern, in the northwest, in Colini. There's a huge township there called Botzabelo. All the people of Botzabelo come from the farms. In Botaville, these people are collected in the mornings by trucks. And in the late evenings, they get to be dumped there again, amidst the toil they will have gone through the day when they were doing the donkey work, against which they are not properly remunerated. And the question therefore is, how easy was it? All, how easy was it for all of the above people from farms to be evicted from the farms when EST Labor Relations Acts, competent courts are in place and they are in favor of the very people on the farms? Where evictions are legal? Our question is, how does it come that orders of evictions are offered when evictees end up in informal settlements? When the law clearly stipulates that the compensation contemplated shall be determined by the court as being just an equitable? And also taking into consideration Section 8 and Section 10 of the EST. EST makes provision to regulate the conditions and circumstances under which persons whose right of residence has been terminated. And how they may be evicted from the land, as well as providing them for matters that are connected therewith. How do we define just an equitable? Perhaps I should say moral and fair. And the question again is, we raise this question therefore whether or not it is morally right to cramp a sizable household with its number of animals into a small plot of 12 meters in informal settlements? It is becoming a trend that evictees are encouraged to harvest corrugated iron. I don't know if many of us in here are aware of that. Although the law allows it to happen, but people seem to be encouraged to take the door frames, to take the window frames, to take the corrugated irons. Because of course by so doing, they have the material to put up sheks in informal settlements. It's a way of encouraging them quickly to do so. And please allow me here also to ask this contextual question. Whether, which one actually, maybe I should put my question this way. Which structure, in your opinion, is more safer to dwell in? To reside and grow your family between a shek and a madhouse? And if you know what I'm talking about, madhouse comes number one. You remember the adage or the saying in Africans, I believe? The one that was saying, as Ian Chan Chanun's Alma. Yeah, yeah. But allow me this morning to adapt it and say, as Ian Shek Brand, Dan Brando's Alma. These structures are actually death traps. Though the courts of law satisfy themselves that alternative accommodation is indeed available, not to mention its suitability. Because before people are evicted, there should be a suitable alternative accommodation. But do the courts of law really satisfy themselves around that? All this happened amidst the scarcity of resources to represent evictees and diminishing land rights organizations in South Africa. This happened in the presence of the Land Rights Management Facility of the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform. And in the presence of Legal Aid South Africa. Our current laws that promote and protect people from farms still have gaps. Police implementation is not sufficiently monitored. The directly affected have limited insight of their rights and the application thereof. Relevant government departments refuse to agree that they do not have capacity, even though they advertise and conduct interviews every day. With regard to the livelihoods chair, do I still have a few minutes? Gone. Oh, okay. Okay, with regard to the livelihoods programs, the same applies. People decided to form CPAs, but instead, instead of running the businesses of the day and to produce from the soil, they are engaged in conflicts. And everything else that threaten the production on the farms. Perhaps at this stage, I need to say the story continues next time we meet Chairperson. Yeah, sure.
In other words, it's just a short way of saying, having to greet each and everyone that is on the panel and on the stage as well. My name is Malapane Tamara. I'm representing Afassa, African Farmers Association of South Africa. Kalwa galawre, most of the issues that are raised by the guys before me are the similar issues that I have here in front of me. They highlighted the issue of job opportunities, meaning unemployment, the issue of poverty, and then the issue of creation of opportunities. If you look at South Africa as a whole, what has been happening, the trends that has been happening, is that everyone in the rural areas tend to want to go to the city to look for jobs. As a result, you find that, you know, we, everyone is here. Whereas we leave, the job opportunities are back to where we come from. So as African Farmers of, African Farmers Association of South Africa, we are here to present what we have resolved on when we met on the 25th and the 26th of October this year. Mainly, what we would like to highlight to the panel is to say that the legislative, as it stands at the moment, it's 100. Meaning, we don't have a problem with what is there in the technicality part of the legislation. The only problem that we have is when we come to implementation. As the speakers before me has alluded, that, you know, from 1994, if you are to revisit the number of programs that were introduced, there are more than 10. But the question is, are these programs really reaching the people on the ground? As an ordinary farmer, am I really gaining anything from these programs? So as a result, we decided on the 25th of October to march to the Union Building, you've probably seen us on the news. And to go straight to the President, to say, we've had so many meetings. You know, there were a number of consultative meetings whereby we raised our issues. But the problem is, we keep on raising the same things, but no one attends to us. So among other things that we raised to the Presidency was to say, Mr President, Honorable President, please, can you just provide us with a comprehensive support to enable black farmers mainly to own and manage a viable agricultural business? The petition mainly was prompted by the fact that 22 years into democratic South Africa, many black farmers still operate in the peripherals of the mainstream agricultural industry, with no real opportunities to grow viable businesses. And issues raised in this submission therefore serves to emphasize what is entailed in the petition. And amongst other things that we raised in the petition were as follows. That plus or minus forty billion rand has been spent on land reform programs since nineteen ninety-four. But there is nothing much to show for it. As you've heard from the previous speakers that, you know, they have farms. But the question is, I mean, where is the support? The land reform have been there since nineteen ninety-four. There are people who were transferred land. But as soon as you get to the land, I mean, you definitely need capital for you to be able to start producing. Then you have to wait at some times for longer than two years for you to get the post-settlement support. Another point that we raised in the petition was that there seemed to be a new program introduced every four years and surrendered just before it reaches maturity. You've probably heard of SLAH. It's one of those programs that were introduced by the government. The L-Red, the Plas, the Recap. But every time these programs, they come and go. But the ordinary farmer on the ground ask, what happened to Recap? They say, no, now we are on the new program. The Recap, said Lulila Gueye. And yet they did not receive anything. Then the guys when go to the parliament, they present that we have spent as much as forty billion rand to improve our farmers. And we got a clean audit, as if clean audit is something that says we've done a good job. The third, the, the fourth point that we raised in the petition is to say, farmer support programs tend to be self-destructing at some times and promote dependency syndrome with many beneficiaries not being able to, to survive on their own once the support was terminated. Here, what we're trying to raise is to say, we, you do have real farmers that are keen to make the land work, are keen to produce, are keen to supply to the market and make money out of agriculture. And then you have these guys that I will just classify as speculators to say, they're using farming as a way of just gaining funds. One will go to IDC, get some funds and go to another program, get some fund and go to another program, get some fund. The question is, what, what is this guy producing? You find that, no, he's not producing much. All he's using his farm for is for getting some funds. So what do we need? Amongst the proposals that we have is to say that, how about we have Farmer's Sasa Card? You know, the Sasa Card that you use to go to the pay point to get some money so that we are able to trace every time you are about to get some funding. They can be able to swipe and say, okay, what did you get before? Something similar to what the, the credit people use to allow, you know, some form of transparency. So that we can be able to see your track record that, oh, only a, a year ago, you, you received something from IDC. What did you do with that? Now we are in another year, you, you want to receive something else. What are you gonna do with this one? No, we, we're not gonna help you. Let's go to another person. So if we can have such a system, you know, we live in a, in an era whereby technology is so advanced that it's easy to trace. You don't have to go to the files to dig. You can just swipe and be able to tell, who is this guy? What, what does he want? Okay? Another point that we raised in the petition is that when the support is provided, in most cases, farmers are not involved, nor informed of the criteria that is used. You find that there are programs in place, they are good in books. And now the question is, how are we implementing these programs on the ground? There are committees, but these committees, they just consult for the sake of signatures to say tomorrow that, but we consulted you. Yet these committees are not being addressed when it comes to the criteria that is used to who is gonna be the final guy, who's gonna get the funding for post-settlement support. The programs that we've had since nineteen ninety-four are mainly based on willing buyer, willing seller principle. If you look between nineteen ninety-four and now, how much of land has been transferred? It's not much. Other figures say that, other sources, they give you one figure. Other sources, they will give you another figure. That's one thing that we have to work on. Transparency when it comes to information. To say, how about there be a, a specific organization or a specific website whereby we can easily go and be able to access as to how much of land has been transformed since we began with the land reform. I happened to attend one meeting yesterday where they were launching, they call it the Selo, South African Land Observatory. They came up with a very great system. I think when you get home, you should just go to that website whereby you can easily trace as to how much of land has been transformed since nineteen ninety-four until now. So that we can easily, you know, put our, our representative to account to say, guys, so far, nothing much has been done. While on the willing buyer, willing seller principle, the willing buyer, willing seller principles requires two things. That there should be a willing buyer and that there should be a willing seller. The question is, what if there's no willing seller? What do we do? Are we just gonna stand and say, okay, no one is willing to sell their land? Okay, from the willing, willing buyer side, what if the willing buyer guy doesn't have money? We source money mainly from the government, but the government is got a limited budget. What if there's no budget? What do we do about that? I happened to also attend another meeting whereby they discussed the land, the, the regulation of agricultural land policy. I think that policy is well known as the land ceiling. If it were to be implemented along with the expropriation of land together, I think something can come out of that because it's gonna bridge that two question of what if there's no willing buyer? And what if there's, I mean, what if there's no willing buyer and what if the willing, sorry, what if there's no willing seller? And the willing buyer guy doesn't have money? Those two policies, if, I mean, those two proposals, the bills, if they were to be put into act or the, the police, the policies, then we, we're gonna move, move forward. On that note, the rest of the information is in the pages. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. And good morning to the panel on all protocol observed. Thank you very much. My name is Theresa Yates and I'm here on behalf of the Legal Resources Center. I'm, I'm not gonna promote the Legal Resources Center, but I'll just say a little bit about who we are and where we come from. We're the oldest human rights organization in South Africa founded in nineteen seventy-nine by Arthur Chauskerson, Felicia Kendrick and Jeff Buttlander. We started out opposing the discriminatory laws and practices of the previous regime. Post nineteen ninety-four and previous to nineteen ninety-four, many of the lawyers at the LRC were very involved in drafting the constitution, creating policy and law to make the new democracy of South Africa a reality for the majority of its citizens. The LRC remains dedicated to ensuring that the constitutional democracy that came into being in nineteen ninety-four succeeds. And in so doing, we have, we've submitted several written submissions to this panel. And we've had some engagements in roundtable discussions around land issues. And so just to mention a few of the issues that the LRC has raised with the panel. They've been mining and, mining and traditional leadership, land reform, informal, former colored, so-called colored areas and other places, farm dweller issues and other laws such as restitution and laws linked to tenure reform. Some of the legal issues are complex and I don't think we need to get into the details of them here. But I will just touch on the questions that have been asked in the invitation that was submitted to us. And those questions relate to what in terms of legislation is working? What is not working? And could we make some recommendations in terms of how we might create something that works for the majority of people? Many of the issues that I think the LRC would raise have already been touched on by previous speakers. And just to say in terms of what is working, I think from our perspective, it's very difficult to point to much of anything related to the land reform program as it stands that is really working in the sense of what was originally envisioned in Section twenty-five of the constitution and subsequent policies and laws. The state with regard to restitution, the commission sits with thousands of unsettled claims with only a fraction of land having been restored to land claimants. And often the land that's been restored has not come with the post-settlement support that's been promised. So we hear stories of so-called failed land reform projects. But those are projects that never had a real chance of succeeding. And we also understand that the state in dealing with restitution, instead of dealing with the backlog and the difficulties and failures and supporting new land owners, instead decided to reopen the land, the land claim process thereby attempting to open the door to thousands of new claims that would overlap with existing claims. The LRC challenged this move based on mainly procedural issues that existing land claimants hadn't been adequately consulted before the land claims process was reopened. So we succeeded in that, in that lawsuit. But I think what it illustrated is that the restitution process, amongst other forms of land reform, is sitting with many challenges and is not delivering on the promise that's contained in the constitution and in the, in the legislation. With regards to tenure reform, we see that more than six years after the Communal Land Rights Act was challenged and struck down in the Constitutional Court, no new laws or legislation, no new laws or policies have been presented to deal with tenure insecurity and land administration in former homeland areas. So we have people whose land and livelihoods are dependent on the goodwill of traditional leaders. Often, that goodwill does not include women. So women have trouble accessing land in communal areas. And the already privileged are ones who continue to benefit from the administration and allocation of land in these areas. Finally, with regards to farm dwellers, which has already been touched on quite substantively, we know that farm let, farm dwellers remain trapped on farms with low wages, subject to forced evictions, with farm owners really never or rarely being held to account. I think from, from our perspective, the, the land reform program, with all its good intentions, set out in Section twenty-five of the constitution, was going to be a nearly impossible program to implement in South Africa. And it required a nerves of steel from a new government and new bureaucrats. It was going to take courage and commitment. And unfortunately, over the past twenty years, we haven't seen the courage that was going to be necessary to ensure the implementation of the program. And we've seen officials really act with cowardice rather than courage. So how do we move forward with the, all the issues that have been raised? The LRC believes that what is working in South Africa is that we're still a country of, of law. We have sound laws and regulations, as a previous speaker said. Some of our, our laws are, are good and the, the challenge is with, with implementation. And we, we still have many people within government and within civil society who are committed to ensuring that the land reform program work in the way that it's originally envisioned. So we believe that perhaps what is needed, because we keep refocusing on law and policy and ideas that were generated twenty years ago that keep being tweaked here and there with new policy and, and new ideas which never move, move forward. And in the meantime, what's happening, people are getting on with their lives. People are abandoning rural areas where cities looking for jobs. Evictions are, are continuing. And so informal settlements in small rural towns are, are mush, have been mushrooming over the years. And policy and legislation hasn't been integrated in a way to deal with the current reality. So the land reform program is not integrated with housing, is not integrated with, with water. So people who live on small holdings, as the first speaker indicated, they, they can't get access to water or they have huge water bills that they're told they have to pay before they can get access to water. So there are a number of issues and policies that need to be aligned and integrated to try and, and move us forward. And, but part of it is that we also have to deal with the backlog of a mess that's been created by non-implementation of, of current policy. And one of those obviously is the Labor Tenants Act. We have thousands of labor tenants mainly in KwaZulu-Natal who in good faith submitted claims to land which they were told in terms of the constitution and in terms of, of law, they had a right to claim and a right to have tenure security on. Almost none of those claims have been resolved. And the Department of Rural Development has basically, excuse me, in discussions thrown up its hands and said that it's not able to implement that law. So before we move forward, we have to have a true and honest reflection and assessment on what we've done wrong in the past. And what we've done wrong is we've created a, a, a very nice framework, legal framework for implementing a very organized land reform program. But we created that program within an environment where we didn't have institutions that were transformed enough to ensure that that program moved forward. So with regard to farm dwellers, we created some secure rights for farm dwellers and labor tenants. But we put in provisions in the ESTA that those rights were going to have to be enforced by police and magistrates. And we didn't do the work that needed to be done to transform the institution of policing, which had never been dedicated to serving and protecting the majority of citizens in South Africa. Likewise, the work wasn't put into transforming magistrates whose, also whose purpose and approach to the law was never intended to protect the rights of the poor and vulnerable in South Africa. So in moving forward, we have to not only look at the laws and policies in South Africa, we also have to have an honest assessment of the democratic institutions that are in place that will have to implement and enforce these laws. Otherwise, we come up with a nice framework again, which again does, won't go anywhere. So we think in moving forward, we need to have a clear focus on access to land and tenure security for the poorest land users in South Africa. We need a recommitment to the values and ideals of transformative land reform and development opportunities for local communities. And we need to recognize the agency of those local communities to have a real voice in what happens to the land once they get it. Not be dictated by a particular policy or particular grant. particular grant that the state will give to people only when they sign off on a so-called business plan, or only when they agree to use the land in the way that the state deems is the best way to use it. Thank you.
Still, of those who expressed interest in working group two, may I invite Ms. Emily Chale, Gladys Ndebele from the city of Joebek, Danielle Munipaw from Ekuruleni, and Silo Can they come closer so that we take a speaker after a speaker? We're waiting for you.
So that's the language our government hears and listens to when you march. We hate that. We don't want to go to the streets anymore. We have been throwing stones before in 1976. Today, we don't have to do that. We don't have to go into the streets. We have to come with strategies of how we can move forward and build our nation. Our mission as La Moza is to have sustainable community members, families, organizations, institutes, and/or enterprises that are engaged in and are in control of sustainable collective, social, economic, and political actions. Our mission is to combat poverty, inequalities, and oppression through people-centered development, advocacy for access to land that was brutally and forcefully taken from our ancestors, substantive democracy, profound social, economic, and political structural transformation, and facilitation of sustainable development for prosperity. In group two, land reform and sustainable livelihoods and rural development. I will start by saying land reform since its inception, we have never seen many changes. Concerns within the land reform process are being raised by communities especially dispossessed, landless, and farm dwellers, that the pace of land reform redressing the injustice of the past is moving at a snail pace, even though the government is talking of fast-tracking the process to transfer land to its rightful owners. The dissatisfaction of the status quo is growing, is increasing, and land claimants are losing hope. They don't have hope anymore. Some of our elders who lodged their claims 20 years ago are living this way, due to the frustrations of waiting for so long to get their ancestral land back. The information, the knowledge, and the experience is fading away. How could we sustain our livelihoods when we do not have land to produce and make developments? I will give an example of the community of Boomplaswe, I'm a beneficiary, JT29 and JT24, that got back their land in 2001. And even now, they have not settled on the land. But what is surprising is that the Department of Water and Sanitation is continuously sending bills, water bills, and demanding payments every month. Water rights have been applied for, but we are not using that water. Escom is also sending statements, and people are not using the electricity there. We have bow holes there, they are not working. Nobody is staying on the farm yet since 2001. The Department of Rural Development and Land Reform had been preaching about rural economic transformation and designed a model, the wagon wheel, of which most of us do not understand how this will improve their livelihoods. Nothing practical is happening. The development that we see today is the building of shopping malls in rural areas, where most of the communities are living under poverty and living on less or no income, others on pension and child grants. Traditionally, we grew up with our elders farming and producing good and quality food to feed their families and also the community because they had plowing fields and big pieces of land to cultivate. Today, those fields and irrigation schemes are not rehabilitated at all. There is no support at all. Government is not taking responsibility to build and develop the capacity of the people in rural areas. There is no proper infrastructure. The dusty roads are inaccessible when it had rained. Let the people be involved in and choose their own development and how they would sustain their livelihoods. I would like to just go down to the land redistribution and restitution in a little bit of highlighting. The two legs of land reform, land restitution and land redistribution, has not been tackled or dealt with according to the promises of our government, especially the relevant Department of Rural Development and Land Reform and the Commission, the Land Claims Commission, that they would transfer 30% of land under restitution by 2014. Oh my God, come 2014, the goalposts are shifted and less than 10% had been transferred. The delays in the restitution processes is due to lack of capacity and the changing of officials within the department and the commission. The formation of different units like RICAP, like READ, like all those units, oh my God, and committees, and drafting of different policies and bills that impact on communities. We have, we have a good constitution that is not followed or upheld, and good laws and policies that are not implemented. The concern is that people who are in the process of drafting these laws are not involved in the communities and all relevant stakeholders, from the discussions and to the policy and decision-making processes. Now comes another thing, the communities and rural women, supported by civil society organizations, so it fits to campaign for one woman, one hectare. One woman to have one hectare to use it profitably and productively, and to own that hectare. But now, it was misinterpreted by the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform as one hectare, one household. The question here is who, whose land and which land is going to be subdivided for redistribution? Okay, I don't want to dwell into other policies that were checked out of the Constitutional Court, the Clara, the restitution of land rights amendment, where La Moza and others went to the ConCord, and the expropriation bill. And ESTA has been mentioned so much, I will just come to the recent Communal Land Tenure Bill workshop, where it was, where people didn't understand more about what is communal land. We stay on a communal land, but we don't have that thorough understanding. But it was put that church land is also communal, and people also had bought some plots and they were staying in one big farm, and also a village with a chief is also communal land. And then during the consultation workshop in September this year, it was found out that such land belongs to the people. The chief is one of the people. The chief is given power by the people. He holds the land in trust for the people. The chiefs keep order, allocate, and provide access. They are not owners of the land. Also, the land does not belong to the church whatsoever. What will happen when the governing structures, like CPA and the royal households are there in, on one communal land? And the tenure for the community or their households? And the institutional roles and role relationships should be clearly defined to avoid disputes of who is responsible for what? We thought the wagon wheel models should be reviewed and improved to solve such issues. Okay, let me go to the regulations, somebody spoke about it, to our, I see the chairperson, the program director is looking at me, to our recommendations. One, we say proper consultations and debates should include all stakeholders and not discriminate grassroots communities, especially those from the rural areas, to take part and be involved in all policy and decision-making processes. Accelerate the pace of land reform and engage civil society to assist where necessary. The Department of Rural Development and Land Reform, together with the Land Claims Commission, to strive to promote interdepartmental coordination or interdepartmental relations in engaging or working together with Departments of Agriculture, Forestry and Fisheries, Water and Sanitation, Energy, Minerals, and Resources. Adequate institutional support needs to be established. The Department of Rural Development and Land Reform and the Commission need to go through an internal evaluation or skills audit to address the capacity gaps in terms of financial and human resources to speed up the process of fast-tracking the land reform and finalizing the land claims. It should be given that all the restitution claims automatically require post-settlement support, also making it easier for claimants and beneficiaries to access the RICAP funds. The department in question have to devise a strategy to protect tenure rights of communities living on communal land and on private farms. Available avenues such as EPLRA, which is interim protection of informal land rights act, could be reinforced to empower rural communities and strengthen their citizens' right against unscrupulous parties or companies. Consideration of coming with one big file, or the Land Bible, or the Land Encyclopedia, that contains all the policies or pieces of legislature dealing with land and its related issues, is highly recommended. We need a book, a file, and then you can page, page 20 is ESTA, page 20 is what have you, the Department. The Department, when restoring land to its rightful owners, should take into consideration to give the land in total, which means in Africans, [speaking Afrikaans]. First preference on land ownership should be given to South Africans, and no foreign nationals should own land in South Africa, and also not to be given the latitude of long-term leases. When talking of ceilings, we should receive the Department's concept of one hectare, we should review, sorry, we should review the concept of one hectare, one household. As women, we came with one woman, one hectare. When dealing with land reform, bear in mind that the land does not grow, but the population grows, and the department should consider expropriation of other lands to distribute equitably. Women should be allocated land, and daughters-in-law should not be discriminated to inherit, control, and own land. Farm workers should be targeted in land reform programs and should become part of the business where they work. Regular interaction between civil society and Department of Rural Development and Land Reform, COCTA, Department of Justice and Constitutional Development, Department of Agriculture, Forestry, and Fisheries is key. We need to ensure that our concerns are reflected in actual policy outcomes. Policy-making is an interactive process, and civil society role should not be considered towards the end of policy development. In conclusion, we cannot wait any longer for land to be restored. Speed up the process and consider time wasted with shifting the goalposts. We need our forefathers' land back to direct descendants, beneficiaries, and inclusion of daughters-in-law. The poverty incidence in rural areas is high, a reflection of our legacy of land dispossession. The process of land redistribution is moving at a slow pace. We all need to remedy this situation. We should walk the talk and practice what we preach. We should revisit the Freedom Charter and align it with the country constitution for a better life for all. I thank you.
Hay luru, na kamola uchile nete ba tu, ba itte di tu. Jele cry ni ati, asuha haka le, e ba na ba urana keneleka, ntsere beli, uwa na bansa ba listo, udi mu somo ba esakry. Ma umu tu, omu lo mu, uwa ba twa la uya esakry, uka na kahu urana kamola. Hau lulu uziu, desa mon, haru sebiu so la kanche uziu. Police fees, hau na umtla kasu, hau na next, ukasi, jale uwa na lena kuwa, uwa uwa lulu sanisweyekai toileti, hakanai di toileti kamatu, ba tu saler rehopa. Kibu tata ba uwa na ba toiletiwa, haki re ridusie ba na kamola uchukamu, uwa ta uya toileti. Nkulele fele urana, hau kula, uwa sanaline na chesufesi, ta silo so, ngingimana. Kamola kamu kukum, kamola, kibu siu ki twelve-four log, uya toileti ka ay. Ba tu, ni retola kupa fele, uwa ni toiletu uwa kukum, uwa ni twa yibona nkuru. Ba tu, uwa na ba ch, ba re, clip down Charter Square, itse ba, ba itse ba kamola mo ilin ch. Isinkamu, atso boni, no iwa ni ata kamola, ato sewa, na, uwa pilo ba uwa na buja. Ba tu retila, hau kukutse, ba tu rehopa se, retoku, retoku ba, uwa za, emu ilava asla, emu asla kaika, uwa la ukaska ba uwa uwa. Ariya, lela ile, urana ba ni, halitse, to ituayala urana, keniya. Ato amba esakry to ituayoko, uwa ba uwa na ha la ba esakry. Uwa na lete, keniya nuwa seventeen, lekasi gi tholi di, kialo.
You know why I greet with all these languages? I just want to test if all the people talking these languages are here, so that if I'm going to talk, they will understand me the way they have welcomed my greetings. Uh, Rinyagana ra, on Suk land! We want land! We tired of policies that are being written. When the land was dispossessed from us, no policies were written. It was only one act. It was only one act. It was only one act, uh, the Land Act of nineteen thirteen, that only confirmed the dispossessions. And then came the nineteen fifty five Act, which deprived us of the land. So let's come to this. I'll come to legislation, the Constitution. You know, when these people were negotiating, I was a bystander. I'm sure God created me to be a spectator of pain and good things. Because I was a spectator, there were negotiations. But when I look at the Constitution, if you look section twenty-five one, it gave security of tenure for the dispossessed land. It gave security of tenure to what? To the dispossessed land. And after giving security of tenure, what a contradiction going down. They say now we can appropriate it for restitution and redistribution. Why don't you distribute first before you give tenure? And why I say so? You look section twenty-five, subsection nine of the Constitution. It tells the government to pass a legislation to get the security tenure of the seventeen million people in the homeland. It's almost twenty-two years. Our government hasn't done that job. There's no law. The people in the homeland or in the farthest distance, they only have user rights. Their land is still registered within trust by the state and is administered by chiefs, so they cannot use their house, their house, I mean their land, for example, to secure loan as a collateral. However, white people next door to our people in the rural areas, they have got freehold rights. You ask yourself a question, because there's another disparity. And we talk about twenty-two years. In two thousand four, the government only passed the Communal Land Rights Act, eleven of two thousand four. But it was so highly, highly wrong. The Constitution scrapped it in its entirety. Since then, the government has not done anything, but these seventeen million people, every five years, when they have to vote, they don't forget them. They don't forget them. They go to them, house to house, but they only give them promises. So if you look, I'm still on this law. If you look, the very same Constitution, you look at restitution of land. We don't want money, we want what? Land. We don't want what? What do we want? And you know why? Naga hi fe, chela te ya fe. Naga hi fe, chela te ya fe. And then, uli melan, abu terebele restitution. But, but ya chela, it can be five million or so, mara they are going to cut it in short, maybe you get fifty thousand, fifty thousand. So really, are we prepared to get fifty thousand for the land that was robbed from us? For the land that was stolen from us? I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I've got a little bit knowledge of criminal law. I know the land was either robbed or stolen, and robbery and theft, those are crimes, and there are still crimes in this country. Those are crimes. We have got our sisters, uncles, brothers, who are languishing behind jails for short drifting, mapos stealing a tin of fish. But in South Africa, robbers and thieves of land are roaming the street freely. They are roaming the street freely. You know, I don't want to talk about policies. I don't want to talk too much. Exugni land, ekwe blu. I want the land, I want to plow. I don't even want to tell anyone what I am going to do with the land. Give it to me first, then we will talk. Give it to me first. And let me say this thing, guys, I'm not, sometimes I'm not talking that you trap hands, I'm being bent while I'm heading. Is this happening, really? If you look at food security, who produce food at these farms? Our brothers, black people. But some people that will say, no, if you give these black people the land, this will affect food security negatively. Go around all these farms, the person that will find working, when it's even raining, is a black man. So which means black men can produce food for this country. He just needs me to come, give me land, I become a manager, and then they work. So guys, you know, I'm not a person who like to fight. I respect law very much, but when I, sometimes I'm taken. You know, we have got reconciliation in this country. Sometimes we need to link these things. When it comes to reconciliation, from us as the black population, we say, let's forget about the other things, and build a non-racial and prosperous South Africa. This is huapendwe, non-racial and prosperous South Africa. How will this country prosper if we cannot share the land equally? Let's not play lip service with English. We allowed ourselves to build a prosperous South Africa. How do we build it? If eighty-six percent of the South African agricultural land is in the hands of thirty-five thousand farmers and large agriculture business? Sorry, sorry, I can repeat. How will we build a prosperous South Africa if eighty-six percent of the total South African agricultural land is in the hands of a misleading thirty-five thousand white farmers and large agribusiness? And considering again that the white population is just making eight point four percent of the fifty-four million people of this country. So then it means, if we don't work together, then reconciliation, because we have given, we said, no, we'll forget. Maru really, let's come. Why can't they say, guys, let's give the land back, so that we build a prosperous South Africa? You know, sometimes I ask myself, that maybe we've got, I don't know, sometimes I like to say, hear people saying, I've got a neighbor from, from, a neighbor, meaning they've got an evil neighbor. You know, sometimes let's leave about the books, about the laws, let's look at our hearts. Every day we are carrying the Bible, going to church, the church that teaches us about love, but we cannot have love with land and just allocate the people of the church a piece of land. But we carry the Bible every day. We tell people that were Christians, and the whole Bible talks about love. It says, love your neighbor the way you love yourself, but it's not happening, so it means you are lying to us. It's not happening. We are neighbors here in the township to big farms, but they cannot even give you five hundred meters to rear five goats there. Where's that love? We tired of lip service, and I want to put it straight. This is our land. This is our father's land. This is our legacy. And, norma, kweza kalan, zizo etala. We're going to get it.
You see, that Monyepao is giving us hints here, that if we have any police people in the house, they might find people who might have committed robbery and theft in the farms. Thank you very much for that. Is Zilo Ramapala here? Not here. We now move to invite Obrimbele from Meguruleni, Tandikamini from Joebek, and Dombe Lutuli from City of Twane, and Raymond Chalom. May they please come closer. We're giving them an opportunity, they missed an opportunity on Working Group One, after which we shall then go to Working Group Three. Obrimbele, is Obrim here? Come, come sir. Tandikamini is not here. Dombe Lutuli from Twane? From Twane, thank you very much. Over to you.
Ngboni Tuba, ikama lamu, Obrimbele njoba sekshiwe, nguya Edavidon. Engtando uku shoke, mowa ama interpreter akona lapo ngza okulumisinto, so that la ba ba ngatola ngamalo, na ba kuasu wusir. Engfu ngtando uku shoke, uti, uwa onkelama exala, ma lheka kulu. Addressa ama past indifference, black empowerment and so on. But, as tando uti, abe discriminator ingo gwa o, waba nyabantu. You can be as black as you like, but na ngabe una fifty to fifty-nine and older, exsevi ga, le, most of these ex are exsevi. Na ngabe you are the poor rest of the poor, awana deposit, if oneega, yalea ten percent, you don't qualify, lama exa ma lhe la wa, abu Bank Act and so on, awaksevenzeli. Na ngabe awana security, awana immoveable property, ma lhe ama exa konala pa, Credit Act, gotwa, you won't qualify. So la wa antova discriminated. Unemployment Act, ile UAF angish. Na ngabe uwa unemployed konoktolayo, na ngabe uku meteni tiya uwa mamon konoktolayo, gotwa discriminator uwa tata. Na ngabe uwa pateni ti, awa topi next dololo. Nomu mamu kuwa la la pa, walo vemsewe zinguti omne sa, mowa, tando ktolumtoana, awa toli lutu dololo. Employment Tax Incentive Act, ikayitaro for la ba ba u eighteen to twenty-nine, which is a good thing, but na ya discriminator against abu forty, fifty, sixty onwards. Engtando uku sa, uti, e actes sa, esna introduce, uti, mtsambe, ipakatanen abu employment for sale, employment for sex, jobs for bodies. Those that are in different cause, that do not get employed, councillors giving jobs repeatedly to the same people, can't we introduce an act? Nifto melaguma chief whips. They are also captured, they are also councillors, they are captured, nomu nga yere reporter kuwa, umo sikatsako. Social Assistant Act, snigaza, ama grants, ama pensioners, child grants, war veterans. Gotwa, engo kumbula uti, e struggle, South Africa was based on five pillars. If veterans, ama war veterans akosidara yewori special pension fund are those that were in exile. What about la ba ba sabalaza la panse, na panse? National Small Business Act, ya uunsika, abu ITC. Yeebo, ba lhe, ama aims and objectives ma lhe. Gotwa, la wa antu, ba ma say, la they still have ideas for their bodies. Why singa yenziku, tama patent lawyers, abe affordable? Mtsambe, skale kuwa, ma yeye yenzu presentation la pa, ukuunsika na ku lona. Utkale kuwa, basa kuasu kuprotectali idea yaku, mowa, isa ujo njo, uwa benefiti. National Small Business Act, okay. National Health Act, ikonai ntleka kulu, gotwa, ema tliniki shem, ison. No doctors, no medicines, no nurses, long queues, ama queue ayakatwa la po. Why singa yenzii, singabe gi ama time, mtsambe, si time la ma patients wetu. Si ti wena, uzoza ngo eight o'clock, wenuze half past eight, wenuze nine o'clock, kuna uti uko, kafiye ngo five o'clock, ayo attendwa ngo four o'clock, ngo four o'clock ba kati queue, ba ti buya uza buya ksa. Medicines and Related Substance Amendment Act. irregular ama drugs, ma alcohol abuse and so on. Gotwa it's, it ulile stupstel ngenyao pe. But it cannot be classified as a drug. Therefore, abantava use ayo, nabantava abuse ayo, nabantava dila ngayo, ababa onjo. And here ele bulalu mtsizo kakulu. Indigenous funerals, mtkenala po kombre, sanfunku umosis katesi. Yebo, eh government yetu, yesnigaza ama funerals ama indigenous. Van taba llo pegile, who cannot afford to bury their dead. But what it does, it also helps to bury their dignity. Because bati ma usuka lapo, usuke government mocharis trade to a graveyard. Only a few people are allowed to come and say goodbye to you. So only your family, what about your friends, labantu ba seven zel, usapile mtlabin. They cannot go and bury you. As kwa zukutu sngokbegela if tombstone, nchambi, nginomtoana waku. Naleso skati benakonu, ngoba ngoba ngasebenzi ngena mali. But why nangangvumel kuti, at least ma senemali, ngikwa zukubegeli tombstone. Because kuti wa indigenous funeral, ayefunyelwa, ukuwuti ifagwe itombstone. Zeni kombre, nkela kuti logo kunyoksele, I've got six other X, but nzo utala kuti ngenzu submission in writing. Kukutu se, singa tate la ba nyabantu, umsebenzi, nyavone.
My name is Raymond Chalam. I am an attorney of longstanding. Greetings to Comrade Motlante, greetings to the panel, greetings to Judge Pele, and greetings to the hall. I thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to speak for a few minutes. The first time I raised the question of corruption in the South African judiciary was by a letter to the United Nations approximately five years ago, setting out some of my complaints. I got a beautiful acknowledgement of receipt, thank you to the judge, but nothing happened thereafter. For three years, I raised this question of corruption in the judiciary with the every judge of the Constitutional Court in this country on at least three occasions in writing to the Constitutional Court. Nothing was said, nothing was dealt with. Then in 2015, I approached the public media and I went on 702 and complained about corruption in the South African judiciary and its effect on the passing and application of acts and on the effect of the administration of those acts. And I just want to clarify that for a minute. There are three levels of government in a democracy. There is the parliament, which makes the law. There is the government or executive, which administers the law. And there is the judiciary, which applies the law. Now, yesterday and today, I've heard all sorts of complaints about how the laws are not working. And they blame the government and they blame parliament. But the area who is obliged to apply the law is the court system, the legal system. And no one says a word about it, no one says a word about it. I have lots of information about corruption in the South African judiciary. No one wants to talk to me. And that's why I thank the panel for this short opportunity to talk. I want to get a bit more specific. In December 2014, the government passed an act called the Superior Courts Act. It is a wonderful act, it is easy to understand and easy to apply. First of all, there are areas of the courts that refuse to apply sections of this act, and I've come across it personally. Secondly, hidden at the back of the act, where no one gets to when they read it, is section forty-seven. Now, section forty-seven is a word-for-word reenactment of an apartheid law which protects corrupt judges. That law, I call on the panel, don't repeal it tomorrow, repeal it yesterday. That law is preventing people from bringing corrupt judges to book. It needs to be repealed. Secondly, you look at chapter nine of the Constitution, the Public Protector section. And in it, there is a provision which says they can't consider judgments of the court. So the court can say what it likes. There is no responsibility in the court system. They know they can't be attacked. Repeal that section. Repeal it. Now, people might argue, no, you need two-thirds or whatever. Tell parliament on a fifty-one percent vote, repeal the section in chapter nine under the Public Protector, which says they can't look at corrupt judgments. The third part is the question of removal of judges from the bench. Now, no one knows, because no one talks about it. Our constitution says we can remove judges who are corrupt for misconduct and for incompetence and various other reasons. It's in chapter eight of the Constitution, under a large heading called Removal. Now, how do we remove a judge? A, we can't sue him, because section forty-seven says we can't sue him. We can't subpoena him to court to give evidence, because section forty-seven says we can't subpoena him to court. Let me tell you. The next step is, under the removal, there is a little clause which says you could only remove a judge when there's a two-thirds resolution by parliament and, the word "and" appears, the Judicial Service Commission consents. Who are the Judicial Service Commission? Did you vote for them? I didn't vote for them, I voted for the government. And why should parliament be allowed to be overruled by the Judicial Service Commission? What is the reason for that? In a word, it's a disgrace. And that is a slap in the face of democracy. No one voted for the Judicial Service Commission. There are people on the Judicial Service Commission collaborating with judges to identify and attack individuals that they don't like. That is pure, unadulterated corruption. Mr. Panel, Mr. ANC, if you want votes in the next coming election, get rid of these sections. Now, let me follow up on a little bit further from my initial story, where we got to the being, making representations to the Constitutional Court. Subsequent to three years of doing that without any results, I then went to the Human Rights Commission and made submissions and supplied them with documentation of corruption. They came back to me and said, no, you must report it to the police. I then, and they gave me all the details of who to report it to and how. I reported it to the national police and I have heard nothing. It is absolutely outrageous that judges have no responsibility in this country. They can make the most laws that absolutely do not represent South African law. I have a case over seven years with twenty-seven thousand pages and every single judgment through that case, every single judgment is not in accordance with South African law. And then, our Chief Justice says, even if your judgment is wrong, you must comply with it. Absolutely not. If your judgment is wrong, tear it up, put it in the dustbin. And if they try to come to your house to execute, fight with them. I have information that there is a cabal, a criminal cabal within the judiciary that is used to identify people and to bring them to book by reducing them to poverty. And there are people who have lost houses, lost assets. This has got to stop. And Mr. ANC, you want my vote in two years' time, get rid of these laws. Thank you.
Sanbonani. Ndombe wagalutuli, obuya epritoria, mama opila nokubasega. Eh, kuma X, njoba ego waso muniwfoitu, ama X esniwe ona, neswa bonayo, lana kui paneli, ma lheka kulu. Gotwa la ma, la ma, la ma X ano banjulule ol kulu. Angalela, gineti disability, fana genklenbe the steps. Oku banjulule, kushu kuti angbalu angala, ukuti minangso ba kona, laklenda. Kuba le only abantu ababable. Then, lo mtoana ova zolo, nineteen ninety-four. Gotwa u freedom, i democracy, yebo kono. But in abantu bayi. Abo mama, abeko lapo. Muma abekona, imbitana ekona. Eh, abantu abanete disability, u aybon abantu, ya sabi sonka bo, lagule democracy. Soke, oma ngibega listezismanza, ngifuna okulu ma ngimsebenzi. Si bo mama, nanamtsange si sache ndeselegi le, ngimsebenzi. Imsebenzi, ipeta o o baba, iboana abapeta i ama kampana makulu, mina fana ngosapa ngapantuwa baba. Oma sengsapile ngapantuwa baba, ome tangele baba, fana genkipincho oncho? Ogokala lok. Oglande layo, hincho oncho la ngapantuwa ike iti, kwezi kuana. Ipi i democracy kuti na, singabo mama. Oma upuma uti yofuna umsebenzi, ama pepa ako, une kampani, yofuna umsebenzi lapo. Uzofiga lapo, kuma officials. Ngitiba deningi, ene bona bakipa hincho oncho eli raite. So uzofiga lapo, ana kuma officials, ako busale, nalay, lay nalay, anti rube u fedapu, be oma ma, u xale pantu. Si bo mama sntangu pega. Senza ma catering. Ipi i kampani, otwa itumili peto oma musbanbani, eh, 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 pega eh, eh, azwaye, averre. Because of what? No ma uhamba wia lapo kuma officially, utu yofuna lauzi is certificate, lisisa health. Trust me. Uzohamba waze wabanfishana, waban gaga, unga story lisis certificate. Detwa ngiti, ama X la wa, awo, awo mamu banbani, abadimani. But itina lava esi lapayana, lapapantuwi ground, no, it's not for us. Soke, i uti etu na ngendongi umsebenzi, abantuana betu. But niwa ma lenaship, ba zo niwa lenaship after lenaship, lenaship after lenaship. But la man lenaship, kuma ngabe bekala be wa kipa, bati, one year, fo sho uzo tolumsebenzi. Trust me, ye gu ton, obusu kanjaluwa man, ogokala lok, ogue sbili. Oma ngabe wenzeki lege wa utolumsebenzi, ba kfuni experience. Ita iswa apile experience asiazi. Because mku meskoleni, kati ngati umeshi kwamange. Ngifuna ugi tolamusebenzi, twang, Jesus, anglete experience, ikala kabani le experience. Besa, oma gungenjalo, wasa we politic? Wasa we politic? Eh, ba kasha ama kantela, ge kashwa lapayana, women by eighty-eight? Are we on? No, charity begins at home, hamba ANC. Women by ANC, oh, laika DA, charity begins at home, ayee. Angega uzé utolé umsebenzi. Angega uzé utolé umsebenzi. So bestela, sa, so mpa gati, kuhulume nuwe, kuti, uwa onkela ama X, zonke listezinla ayipalire lana, is suitable for bona. By the way, agega ende, i follow up ngazo. Ngoba, tinasi lapanti, si asogole, esfor, tinabada ba pila netdisability. Trust me, trust me. Ogue tu, aguko, ngempela, ngempela, ngoba, ngale umsebenzi, iangasha i kampani. Manfiga kona ba zo te, msi silituli, we won't afford you, because you are on crushes. La, we using steps, asina yo inda, yo yako yo kutunga kwa zukambala. So you are not suitable for this job. Hamba, hamba, hamba ge holeche, bati, no, 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 we can't. Inda wo, ayiko accessible. Hambesa offline, ba zo, foot abana oma facilities. Kushu kuti tinabantu abapila netdisability, si sache ndeselegi, nogzula. Besa footi sipinda schedule our communities. Abantu, bagiti mpa gati espila goona. Oma ma, nangbo ti ngpela, ginobaba, ginabantuana ngshatile. Gotwa, eh, kui community ami, it's like a half-mother, nama kuma mesla panalanga, kashala ikanda. Ngentela, eh, nishtu tanga, otinabantu abanete disability. Besa kuba weske, uwa, 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 zinyizi into, wantu utolé disability, trust me, angita si busy. Ipdisability ayizeli. Na wexa so ngavuga u disable nchenga ami. Soke, how would you feel, uku tumasu fugene disability, baba, o mama ay fugene senati azin? Layo na minangenge tolarite, agje pant, akshie. Mama wenuzo filaganjaye. Yindela ge layo, tina, eh, anisipili sangayo, tinabantu abanete disability. Sambe siya ipedela. But ah, naga, abekisholi mosi. Niktocha, atu uhemutu, ba fana uta fugene mutu, minangza ngishu uta kabe isholi. O government duetu, uti, abantu ba disable pambili, ngomlomo. Abo mama, bayalande la, na kona footi zokchali klinisongomlomo. So ito esi zela la, abasibiza layona. Ginacha bulaka kulu, namtsange, manga sebenzi it diferente. Yo kuti, unga abo kuti sibizalo la, uzo maga irregista. Gotwa sibizalo i action. Ogobte na. Siya volunteer, kano kuvolontia yin? Uksabenzela, umpa gati wa kongo ba utanda, kupuma utanda, ndakone. Eskati nsa manje, geso kuvolontia, beso kaba kona na ndaba ti stipend. Angiti, ukuti pelanga kwa zukteni ti pongo ashe. Genze lugiana, lugiana. Si volunteer until uzu kobe, so. Wantu wa tu exercise ama right wa ko u volunteer, trust me, you are out. You are out, ba zo funo monye, na meta u volunteer for ten or twenty years. Wantu wa, 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 tata extent for yourself, when I were out. Na la ikaiyala, na ngimukona la, electric slide, ge volunteer netdisability ami. I've been here almost for twelve years. Volunteer ngisakasa, ngemali am, na ngakona gonkoko am. Na nemali ngipok government, ye i disability grand, uvolunteer ngayo la ikai. Thank you, Ndombe, ba zo ni gi plate logo. Uyena hulume ni lo esam poten. Si te etale ni begune banjulule. Sati eh, si funa uhulume ni uze squazu patana kasi, tinaspatana kasi? In my point of view, no, aspatani kasi. Tinasi kende zelana, nogzula. So bestela kutu government duetu, enze kasi njongo ba, eh, 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 eskombisila ama X. Kunga abo kuti la ama X, akina lakina, because I don't think utabanda ba la South Africa lapo. So bangagi abanga waza ama X, abasere na pangimova. Bangagi ababuse. Bangagi abababusera yo. Ngoba benga wazi la ma ekta abaseli lapangemova. Si te lukuti avamenti pume all out. Na ma ekta wa yo. Iyo eskombisala lapaya. Besi yawa exercise kona lapo. Oguzesia zuti sipetwa u hulume ni ofunugu skubega lapambili. Ogokina, bo mama, it's high time. It manje uyebonomaka. Si azmela abo mama banegin fifty six benzi zidosenzeka. Namange na ni ngenzi zidosenzeka. Pantino Baba bazos abusera. Basfuna marogo, basfuna imsebenzi. Basfuna hinchochonba, basfuna imsebenzi. Jango pokavamentu eti o mama pambili. Aga kwenzege ganja. Bas nige nenda olasuzu tikono Baba ma ngimbig. Manga be ngfune ike ti ngfune imsebenzi. Langi zo mbiga kon. Banga ngigi kutengize lapay office la esabenzakona no Baba ngoba leo complainta mizutati lakshmi napangia bong.
Thank you very much. May we please move to working group three. And invite Nomarashia from Kulumani. Doctor Jobson. Mister Ozipiri. Pasta Rosie. Are they here? And then Maryam Zwanne from Jopec. Wusisomachla ngo from Tzwanne. And Wusintlapo from Ekuruline. Is Miss Nomarashia here? Please come.
Thank you. Okay. Sanbonani. Mulweni. Ngobwa tlaisha nzo pellela apa nuzukuthandi epambili. Tinigwaji tubanya nelmusemuchusu wa ne tlaisha le tu. Di za ozama ge ukuti kabaka nga ngui ngui. Eh, Unomarashia bona sebuya kukuluman support group. Eh di za uteta ngentongje. Ngobe ekta eyo duanje ansasuzfaga ezinyebense za uteta ngazo. Ngale ekta abaybizango kuba National Unity and Social Cohesion, the Promotion of National of National Unity and Reconciliation Act of 1995. Eh, I will be just. This is lumaluma ma rimigobislunga ansas gotwa. Di za omani dinngena je ga ngui ngui dipuma. Di senze leba na abantu ababangasi vayio i sin tu. Bayba bayba ambeglenda. Eh, the act was done while the conflict and violence here in South Africa were still taking place. Which makes most of people, especially the citizens of South Africa, not to know about it. Either the victims or the perpetrators. Which led that the victims and perpetrators could not manage to go, some of them to go and participate constructively towards the TRC, which was the commission which was established after the act. But those who managed to look at the act, especially the Kulumani members. We did view this TRC eh commission as one which was as good starting point and a process of hope for the South African citizens to bring peace, unity, restore their dignity and ubuntu. And to help with the processes of transformation towards building this nation. But this was to be done through the triple R. We say to Kulumani as Kulumani members, there is triple R which was going to help this nation to be able to transform even the victims and survivors. And also to make this a nation to be built towards these processes which are being mentioned above. These triple Rs were the redress. That means ngisinto. Ukubochwa guama. Nayeh, but that means ukbandeshwa. Ogwa kwenekelo kwa kwenzuwe ngetlaisha la ntoni le apartheid. Reparation. Kubekoa isngapezelo, isbonelelo. Esiti setini, snigezuwa ama kucaoba. Wetaisha le apartheid. Oguzee kubekona, ukutola, kutetwa angani. Ngethrough and reconciliation. Lenti ti reconciliation. Nukaloluaniso. Kwa kuzanyu anyelelo kuba ngaba. Kwehliswe la mimoya. Obabulungu la gap ya isenzeka. Pagati kwenyezele ya isenzua. Kubantwa bamnyama. Siya itata sa ibona ngo loloshobo. Singa malunga Kulumani tlaisha lapant genko. Selisa silichon sisa kakle lomteto. Sa bonu ngato ummeto umtle. Ozisa indoni itemba. Logu logu chincho kwenpiloza ntoni zabantu. Sa bonu kuti. Ga inolande loa. So restitution. Okubuiseloa. Kwezinduza tatoa yo. Abantu yini. Yogwenze kuti utu utate loa indoyako orumosheloa indoyako. Kubekinlela zo kuti. Kubekinbu yagezo subuiswe. Rehabilitation. Uti ulungi iswe, lungi iswe. Eh, ogwenze kuti abantu ana be tlaisha liza the future generation kushu wengislungu. Banga pinde babuyele. Kwe sasimo, esasikuusotina bantu badala. Kwa kuyindela yesa ibona angayo. Sanne temba. Sa itata uti iti arsile. Iku mkombanlela. Sisikaloo. Londo ke iyapi. Iya egunungso yini. Sa ichongo ngoba sisikalosendela. Eh, kuti nekichuwa nkuwepilo zabantu. Na se kuyen kuti. Kubekola indo wengislungu bizwa ngoba i justice. Obulungi iswa esafrika kutu benziwe. Nditeta genko ummeto ke apo palo wenzeka 1995 ndakondo. Not twenty years, unless twenty years or twenty-two. Eh, kwa kfanela ba lomteto yatini uyaku be kuyenziwe. Kotu de eyenze ga yo. Kwa ba kikepenkulu. Okuba unga nageloa. Kubekola ndu ba unge unga kujexeloa pambili. Si si busy ngoba unfinished business of the TRC. Ngoba le process ubanga ba yenziwa ya vuleka. Ya i open door policy. Ya i process se vulelega yoba. Ifiga lele na se zindlebeni. Nazomto ngakange ayve. Joma besenchila kaseka legen ngiti. Ukalue. Abanya bantu besa betu basali mala. Abanya bantu bengegas. Ba kui confusion stage like South Africa. I conflict isakubeka. I violations isakubeka. Uba ne akumbula kakulhe. Asitanga ma si vota 1994. Kwa pelu ulhame. Kwa pelu uku kohelana. Kwa pelu uku kutanda buzana. Kwa pelu uku ngatembani. Kwa kubeka. Uba ne akumbula. Kwa koi sganego esenzeka yo. Ngenklaisha si vota yo. Kotwa ngenklaisha si vota isganego. So klimala kwa bantu. Abanya ba 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 bulawe. Za kubeka esenzekezo. Kotu angena ya temba. Abantu ba sa South Africa be chongba. Ma kubekoa ingukuko i transformation. Ba kubeka ba ya elu votuwe. Ba ubasi sa vota na namplanch. Si senne temba. Si chongba kuba imi teto. Ka yenziwa yo. Ma yenziwe iziswe pi. Abantu yini. Ba ichonga bantu. Ba guazu ba bani kwezo. Nto yini platform. Indawo. Apo baza utini. Ba ivchongi sisele imi teto. Ba ivisi siseka klile imi teto. Ba guaznabo kuti. Ukwenkeza imi bono. Agu ubakaa abantu be kui grassroots level. Abana ngonto. Di teta nje nduwaya kui grassroots level. Kotwa asina ulhala so ngipalamente. Si koloa ubanga ba si directe amalitasuwa ta se parlamento. Kuti ma genze ntoni ngegusasa leliliswe. Balake ganja ni eliliswe. Oguzelbe ngumzekelo na guamanye amazwe. Oguzee nom na kasteta ngi constitution ente. Oguzee yaziwe le constitution bintle. Funege izezanti. Kubekoa indawo apo abantu ba taktiselu angayo. Ba ilunge sekwa ba iboni rongo. Ba guazu kui buisela pekummeto. Nommeto. Uze bantu yin abantu ba guazu. Ukuklasila po. I gap ekoyo apa. Kuti platform i create wa. Okuba ngaba bantu nama organizations. Nabantu abasimiseleyo. Njenga ma volunteers. Njenga ma organization. Akwazi yo kuyenza. Okuti i create platform. Inte yati no fans. You will do with whatever. Uza wenzena. Noba wenzena. Nobu yomea pasukwesla. Uba uyayenza oyenza. Se oyenzilelondo uyotlala pasukwesla. Utibanisabantu. Besenye mi bono yabo. Ni tate le mi bono. Ni sepezule parlamente. Di teta nje teta. Di teta ngando ni ngo ngo ngi experience. Nige sin tu sicho. Di ne experience alento. Si tate isdracha, kukostacha. Singa si engaja ngasungu Kulumani. Ukalela from pansi. Local, provincial, national. Ukuyon ma e parlament. Masiteta ngi justice. Si dilene Department of Justice, special needs. Ka si timakulungi iswe. Lommeto we TRC. Le ekta i ine gaps. Esingatinwa. Esi shie abantu banisiba sa South Africa. Ngapandle. Esenze umsebenzo ngakubeleleganga. An unfinished business of the TRC. And ezik discriminator ama nyama kategorisawashialanga panje. Masuwa italo zofumansuba. But i i act rules and regulations. Zenzuwe pi. I parlament. Then bonabe Department of Justice. Abana yo. Eh, ekono. Logu ba ba itate lentu nichoyo.
Thank you very much colleagues. We we just received information now that Umana Ngumdu obana mafits. But she recovers almost immediately. Now the medical team is attending to her. And so that is the attack that she had. And so eh she's in safe hands. She's receiving the best care. And we will allow the next speakers to to continue. Thank you very much.
Sanibonani. Good afternoon. I am Marjorie Jobson. I'm the National Director of Kulumani Support Group. Nomarashia Bonasi who spoke earlier is our national organizer. And I'm afraid I didn't follow everything she says, but I I don't. I hope I haven't, I'm not going to be repeating too many things. Kulumani is a network across the entire country of 104,000 people who are survivors and family members of victims of apartheid crimes and gross human rights violations. Our membership is also made up of people who were political detainees and military veterans. And we and we offer services for healing, recovery from trauma and and capacity building for active citizenship with with many, many development projects that we take forward. So the legislation that we both wanted to speak to was the promotion of National Unity and Reconciliation Act. Because for the last, all the years since the adoption of that act in 1995, we have struggled with the way that act has excluded categories of people due to what we consider very arbitrary bureaucratic decisions. And we had a very useful meeting with the Minister of Justice in January this year where he confirmed that these exclusions are completely unjustified. But up till now, there is no legislation to address the exclusion of people who have suffered the atrocities of the past. And I thought I would give a quick summary of how we have tried to use every available mechanism in the country. Starting with the setting up of the TRC unit in the Department of Justice when it started in 2005. And every engagement and the submission of policy proposals on how to produce victim-centered reparations policies has never ever produced any formal response or engagement with policy proposals that were submitted. Every time the department published in the government gazette a call for submissions on any of these issues, we made detailed submissions. We coordinated submissions from our partners in the Coalition on Transitional Justice and also from the Center for Human Rights. None of those activities produced any response from the Department of Justice. And we have made submissions on community reparations, on remedies in health, education and housing. Nothing has ever produced a response of considering those proposals. We have been to parliament every time there was an opportunity. We argued for special pensions and how the Special Pensions Act needed to be amended to lower the age at which you could qualify for a special pension. And that happened. We went to parliament to argue for special benefits for military veterans after running courses and mentoring the military veterans who were not yet organized. And we managed to win the benefits for them. But up till now, none of these benefits are now applying to all the victims who sit on our database who suffered gross human rights violations under apartheid using the definitions of the TRC. We were realizing that all our engagement with the Department of Justice was not ever being relayed when the Department of Justice and the TRC unit reported to the Portfolio Committee on Justice. And so we asked for an appointment to make our own submissions to the Portfolio Committee. And it was a very unhappy experience for us because we had to raise the money to get to parliament. We prepared the presentations. And once we were there, the chairperson of that portfolio committee stood up and said, we are not going to allow Kulumani to make their presentation. And he had flown down from the Department of Justice to intervene. And the only response we managed to get was And the only response we managed to get was, was someone on the committee saying, "But don't you understand that the remedies were only ever intended for people who were identified as victims in the amnesty process?" Well, we have been through all the transcriptions of the amnesty hearings. And we have found many, many victims who were identified in the amnesty hearings who themselves have never qualified for the benefits of the reparations policies. And so we're now at a point, and we then approached, we've made, well, starting from 2009, when the presidential hotline was set up. Across the entire country, thousands of members phoned the presidential hotline and said, "This is a burning issue. Our lives are going backwards unless the harm that we suffered is somehow remedied," which we would call compensation. Compensation for harm done by agents of the apartheid state. And we are not making any progress in our lives. We are not able to look after our families. Of course, we can't pay for education. And we, so we eventually got an appointment with the Office of the President, with the DG, Dr. Cassius Lubisi. And we had a very fruitful engagement. And our submission then went, was sent back to the Department of Justice. And the same responses came back. There's no way we can remedy this situation. And we have then engaged with the Office of the Chief Justice, also to appeal that it is possible to write policy that can fix the problems, that can stop what Minister Masuta has called a grave injustice to people who were struggle veterans and victims of these abuses. And so we really, really believe, and we have lots and lots of contributions to make for getting new legislation in place. And there is no capacity presently in the unit that deals with these issues to, to generate any kind of legislation that will do it. We have served most of the countries in Africa who have hosted truth commissions. All of those truth commissions have come to consult with Kulumani about how we create programs and opportunities for victims of gross human rights violations. Some of them now are making more progress than South Africa is making. And in particular, Cote d'Ivoire, where we, we hosted their entire truth commission for a week. And they went back and had their entire process. And now they have set up a compensation commission. And we have come to believe that the only way to finally resolve these issues and to do justice to the people who were in the struggle, who carried the sacrifices that our preamble to our constitution speaks about, is now to have a new innovation, a compensation commission, to compensate people for, for the terrible debts that they carry. It is a debt the country owes to people for what they did standing up against the apartheid regime. We are very, very aware of how people who fought the external military struggle and the underground movement lost contact with the ordinary people who were the proud people at the front line in most townships across this entire country, in all the small towns. And so we, we would like to, to see a strong recommendation going from this meeting that we need to call for new policy to set up a TRC compensation commission where these matters can finally be resolved. And where that wonderful, you know, kudos that we run as a nation for this remarkable TRC can finally be fulfilled. Because as many of our colleagues say, it is a shame that nothing is being done to redress the harms of the past that were carried by about 100,000 individuals, the massive sacrifices they made. Thank you very much.
Sunny Bonani. Ni janii? Sekona. Angtatele lchuba ngboneng mbele. Gwene zivelo kuti. Utholi thuba elingaga uki umepagati kompagati. Waseninkzimafrika ngenge ngitu mpagati wase chauteng. Kodwa, neng mpagati nijeni, mpagati waseninkzimafrika. Angtatele lchuba ngbengelele ikuguthuane ne ikulza mlapambili. Ngukuti, zenza ila ngelfana lelukuti. Abantavafana nati ebobu yamalukshini endawenzo klala. Bakwazutu, baba nesu. Okokta la njeika malama nguvusinklapo. Ngibu ya endaweni yase sitho fe guruleni. I'm an independent filmmaker, a cultural practitioner, and a sports recreation arts and culture activist. Siyazosongo kutma szenala, siyazalasufumbete izandla nganjui. Ukfungeka tawati kwetu izandla nganjui, kushutisufumbeta ma talent. Gwi lungelelo wonke wonke kutma yala ekathula ehamba efuliza ndla ayitolo kuti. Utalented ngakupi. Ngikshiso yin ngonalu. Ngikshiso uki. Benklala ngbona emnyekene mtatunume mbili. Gunama masparticipation. Nsa ikumbala kakulu wa kbizokchiwa imasakane. Masparticipation games. Eyanze ka ifaranani endawenzi sakuruleni Eastern Region. Logu, kutale uki inkane zetu njoba sila namchange. Ezinyezia pala, ezinyezia keta, ezinyezia ketele. Uzo stolu kuti inkane masakele ketele. Zino mkubwa uki. Ziphuma ziyemapagi, ziti zokeza mapalpeni. Zitagwe, zbe uputo. Bat buya mama baba izolandi nganiyakula apa ipagi. Ngenpaga nglazi wengi elbizokchiwa imponing park. Kal dalimshol. Itati kap mbele. Kodwa, logu ngikshiso yin uki. Uhulmeni bapatbam. Njenga chauteng legislation. Mchame etelela omonispalbe tawafana masakuruleni. Sessu asuelaba games laka yofana umasakane games. Akoka inkane zetu ngeskati sama festive seasons, which are holidays. Utholi inkane zetu zitole ama pagi wonke lango ilogish. Zenza wonke mkgiliwaanile oibonai. Kodwa, uyasbus kuti inkane ikula yini iphusilela ikanda. Uma uzo itole pagi pe muqoi. Ipete ikani le huntas, whatever the thing you call it. Eli alhelela pelifo, alhele ne boyfriend. Bese nyayibuzu kuti. Unayomama nobaba yin. Gwi amazu mamaki nobaba kutu uku ngaliskati. Kodwa, ngbue ngbu yefut ngenge ngbuge uhulmenuetu kuti. Lama pagi njoba eywaka. Uhulmenua kama pagi. Afaki pride place. Afaki itulo. Agafa kama sports facilities. Agafa kama netball, agafa kama basketball, agafa kama half grounds. So umuzo afaki stuff se pride park utava nbenzene. Because ama ground apeli yile. La beknama ground corner guaki amason. Ninga ngzwi nikaba ngita amason omabi. Guakiwe amason, ngahamba malukishonki. Na la beknama cinema corner, amason. Kodwa, na ifutinkingibili mbele ekten. Uhulmenuetu ngambiile minake guruleni. Ngfunklangani sa umaspala wetu umnyango we shrek, no umnyango we city parks. Kodwa, ngichle gili bagwetu, ngaybeka pants. Uki, umaspala balangani le umnyango mbili. Usreks, enze ama half courts, ama basketballs, nama netball, so inkane zetu ma ziyakla mapagi. Zingayo kwenza enye yinto ngapandla kuli ntoktiwa yini recreational activities. Ngoba, bazopuzo chwala bapeeme, bata tane bawezinyinda wenge ibali. Ezulu xlasu. Kodwa, siyashtoale futu kuti makpele uniaga, no mukala uniaga. Snendokchiwa iIDP. IIDP yetu iangaga mino ngoba. Ifiya kiiti, isiko ele. IIDP ngazminu kuti mani, mani ifunda egnotin zwa uhulmeni. Yila konabantu bachele konuhulmenuaseka kutka uhulmeni. Sfuni sport center lapasfuna yin lapasfuna yin lap. Kodwa, yotole kutama department atka. Askwazu kwenza logo ngaliskatsama njema mchame sakhbona umnyekene mtateseayo ipache tisiko ele. Bese yayibuzo uki, okay. Ma vati pache tisiko ele. Abantu besibenzani kweni lukshini. Umuzo umunyeloyo. Snene izizi indaktiwa ama customer care centers. Nyakabanga zonke endawo. Ama customer care centers wetu. Ana yonke into itingayo. Ama financials, lapo talokoni renti, water. Kodwa, ayiko sports recreation arts and culture kumatripo sizu wetu. Yes, but a several ama communities. And I would like to ask why. Ey kolwen, bagwetu. Inkane zetu ziyafunda ngentama mama kuti. Logu kunyazukwenza yao ziyagwenza kodwa, ziyafundi inkane zetu. Ben nga chabula bapatbam. Uma inkane zetu zingafunda. Ngengala buto zetu, omandela osisulu. Kanya kabanga kutsesa pelis katso ya nfanribeke nova skotakama ama textbook queen. Yingani, yingani. Ngenkati kogwakiwa iflek laseninkzimafrika. Wa puma isbige zelo so kuti abantabesa, banetalent, loktro, bazotro, ini iflek. Yingani ke manjukuhulmenuetu angakipige ismeme zo so kuti. Abantabakwazukupala creative writers abesa pambili. Bazopalela inkane zetu, ngengala buto zetu omandela osisulu. Ba funda ngi history yetu. Inkane zetu ziyakwazu logu kuti. Zikchande kaba velo kubona kuti, zikchande kaba kthula. Namije ngati mangkula. Ingoti amlapambili guakui homewek, kuitlaswek. Ngale move yini gunama leriskapiyons. No, gweyenge kupiyonsiskatsama. Guaksesenabanye chi, oto bi create no ban. Ngangpala maleris ngala kase move. Kodwa, ingingibesela ekten uki. Swatutukisa nganjua nama talent. Ngoba, endawenzi fana ngambiya kwanamini. Gunama multipurpose centers. Kodwa, ayiko endawenzi fana njenke art center. Ka ayiko. Inkane zetu ma ngabe ziyasuka ziyalaga ngiyachokona. The only creative part uki yamapagi. Yamapagi zopuzo chwala zpe muqoi. Shela nischol. Kanya ngabe ziyasuka zyo tanzo. I remember the days when I was still a young star. Wa gunenklanga nengangicho yidilekchiwa itzakane youth club, yese tzakane hall. Abaninga kona namchange basibenzela isitho fe guruleni ama ikonuk development, sports recreation, arts and culture. Yingani bangapindi futbabo ne futbabo uki kuti. Agesakela lenkane zamange ama youth centers where they can go. Yin, bawo tanzo, bawo kula. Inkane yining namchange, zina maschude ama bedroom. Gwi akela atma, ngakalo ngentele imicrophone, ngentele ipika. Gwi asbus kutu kwenza ngale zintolipaka mirin. Wakumthulu. Lo mthulu itzno longa, angengusho logu ktolu mlo. Sports, recreation, arts, and culture, or creative industry itzno longa ehobi bagwetu. Lesintozbeka uku ulala itafleni ziyabapatala, abantu bayatla, bapila, mdeni iyakula. We no longa hobby. Agse yonai ehobi, sports, recreation, arts, and culture. Namchange snewafana vafana. Esme layo. Uma ipela le. Basasokona basi itifundasosoku elukshini. Ka angboni. Inteke siyanzileke ekuruleni, ilangbiya ngakone Eastern Region. Nchalileke na bafowetu. Baba laga bafowetu. Ama film. Baba kula bafowetu. Sitatela babakulayo, na la babapalayo. Satla babapala, bapalitor. Ama short stories. La babakulayo, abapa lama soundtrack. So we combine the two because ifilm, aliki film, enka na umthulu. Sasa senza, injokala njeingayizevele senze this year, Ngoseptember bizokchiwa y David Wapapezon Ekuruleni Film Festival 2016. Nimejela, I'm very proud to tell you that you can go to www dpzekurufilmfest.com. Uzo ybonelumsebenze swenzili. Okokta nage, program director. Si nezi zinda emalukshini ezakiwayo. Nyakumbula ku 2010, sisoko ku 2010. Guakakiwa ama Legacy Stadiums or something like that. Namchange umungogo abu ukitanjua. Hm, ison. Kodwa, spinde futu iIDP iti isakele ama stadiums. Ngzolkipaleka madeslungu, yeyiliza mka kulu. Ama White Elephant Stadiums. Awange negi. Awange negi. Engatu uhulmenuetu wase chauteng. Etellelenza antu kuti. Agenke nelelege, bafundiseka banbagi iti no uhulmenuase makaha kuti. These policies that prevent us to enter these stadiums. Njenke tzakane stadium, yuko tema stadium. Zakiwazi nklakota skonuku isbenzes. Nyakabanga mokfuno 85,000 rent. Ni team, ni ku development no mtatavu 85,000 rent ukukis stadium. Abantu anabajalelo putu. Abasasenchi sakali sports. Gunama abantu anabajalela emalandela ground. Ngasuka manju yenyo uki Friday bayatla labantuhan. Labasasenchi sakali sports. Kodwa, it development ipinde futu vinjo uhulmenuetu asekaya ama policies zwa ke anzi mangaga. Kodwa, ngzotando kela ke ba bapatbam ekteni. Ageskuleni lama policies. Astundiazel. Askwazu upumela uma ama policies and become ama retapes for our development. Our development lies on the infrastructures that are in the townships, our stadiums. Ama ground aweko, njoba ngshila tato amason. Ama cinemas aweko, atato amason. Siyapi. Si practice e pleasant, si kambi e pleasant. Ngala omafusha nyabong, angtando kuti. Ninkzimafrika. Uzalwe ufumbeti. Guguwakutmasuka lukathula, ufuliza ndla, uyitholo kutu upilonga apniabong.
Thank you very much. May we invite our last two speakers. Mike Steinbeck and Slimumusia. Are they here?
Thank you, program director. People, one of the difficulties that we have in these kind of public hearings and what I've been listening through, throughout, is that the public hearings essentially focus on, on what is going wrong in our country in regards to government. When in truth and in fact, the proper way to explain what is going on in our country is to put in the caveat that says government under the African National Congress. And if you leave that out, you leave out the fact that the African National Congress was in discussions in many clandestine meetings with our former oppressors or our current oppressors. And if you leave out that particular aspect of the African National Congress and the relationship with the oppressor before 1994, then you leave out a critical part of trying to understand the circumstance in which we do not have land. The circumstance in which all of us are complaining about various issues. The circumstance in which Kulumani complains. The circumstance in which Mr. Chalam complains about the judiciary. All of those things are directly related to clandestine meetings between the African National Congress and the oppressor who continues to be the oppressor. It is unrealistic that we should be standing here today and having a discussion like this 22 years after the fact, when in truth and in fact, the bottom line of our problem rests with the matter of racism. And in 22 years, government under the African National Congress has done nothing whatsoever to bring us to an understanding of how racism works. Racism is not the, is not Penny Sparrow in that sense. Racism is about dispossession. And we do not have land because of dispossession. And if you go on and claim victories about taking Penny Sparrow to court, you're claiming that much of a victory. The victory that we must claim is the victory for the dispossession of our property. Now, I told the speaker that I belong to, my organization is called the Apartheid Museum. Now, what you will, what you understand about the Apartheid Museum is a structure that's there at Gold Reef City Casino. On the 2nd of December 2001, The Sunday Times ran an article for you which told you that the Apartheid Museum was conceived by Abraham and Solomon Kroc. Now, The Sunday Times lied to you. And everybody else lied to you. Because in September... Because in September 1998, I had a 48-page full-color prospectus. And the person that bought my prospectus with the registered trademark, the Apartheid Museum, was the deputy minister in arts and culture, Bridget Mabanda. She bought my first document. It was bought by, but the first document came to my home and they bought a 48-page full-color prospectus outlining the detail of the Apartheid Museum. In January 1999, Mr. Nelson Mandela sent me a letter in which he said congratulations. But when it came to the time for the African National Congress to be able to say, no, the Crock brothers are lying, nobody in the whole of the African National Congress was willing to say that. Until the Crocks put under oath that they stole my registered trademark with the African National Congress. And it's yet under oath. I brought this document to give it to, to the chair. Now, now there, now there's something I want to tell you because we have a judge here in this house and we have very qualified people. I have been in litigation with Gold Reef City Casino for 15 years, for 15 years. Let me tell you two things which a judge will qualify for me. There is no law in the Republic of South Africa that will allow you to register a company while somebody else's trademark is on the trademarks register. There is no such law in the Republic of South Africa. There, there is no law in the Republic of South Africa that can allow you to register a company without a CM5. This is a fact. There is no law in the Republic of South Africa that can allow you to register a company without the written permission of the trademark holder. I am the holder of the trademark, the Apartheid Museum. And the company that I have been litigating with for 15 years is a company called the South African Apartheid Museum at Freedom Park. While my trademark was on the register. And for 15 years to go along with Mr. Chalam, not one judge in the Republic of South Africa is able to call out the law the way it is. And I go back and I say to you, listen very, very carefully. Listen carefully to what I'm saying. I'm saying to you that it is an artificial inspection of government if you do not inspect your government in the context of a government that was, that is led by the African National Congress. That is your primary focus. It is your government that is led by the African Congress, African National Congress that brings about all of the problems that we face, especially everything that relates to racism. Thank you.
Thank you to get this opportunity for today. We thank all who have been arrived here, even our protocol at large. Thank you, our former president Kalma Matlanta and all the protocol at large. My issue is the same of yesterday. When we were not yet finished about, when we were talking about our land that we never yet received, but another did receive it. As we have already said yesterday, that only those people who were known as the lawful people that have been occupied land, but those, the most of people did not yet receive their land back. I want to talk, to be specific, when I talk about the land issue, I want to talk about Valmansdal. Valmansdal during the first removal, there were people who were residing there in Valmansdal. There were a lot of tenants who were staying there. But during when the people coming back, they said those people, they need to be, to be verified. So that who are the people, are they are the right people to come back or not? But during the first removal, when the people were removed there, they never asked for those things of verifying whether those people, when the day when they come back, we are going to take them back. So now we are sitting there with a real problem. People who are hungry for land. They are all over now. People who are wishing to come back to their land of Valmansdal. They can because of the landlord of days of now. They, they want their land to be grazed by the wild people who are having animals there, like cattle, like other stuff like that. But you got the tenants who are already in waiting for their land to be given. Now, last time after they received their land, they said now, those people of the tenants of Valmansdal, they were not the rightful people, they must apply again for their land. After we have been waiting until 2014, 2014 on July 29, we have applied for their land. After we've been applied, they said, no, we cannot apply for, you cannot, we are not supposed to apply for the land because your land has already been handed over to you. The only thing that you're supposed to do is to ask for the, to write the letter to be integrated to the old claim of Valmansdal. After we've been writing the letter to be integrated to the old claim of Valmansdal, it happened again, they said, no, we can't give you the land now because now we want to know the first, you are prioritized. Tell us why you want us to prioritize the land now. How, what must we suppose to say to them? Then we write the letter, say, okay, fine. Because we are the former tenants of Valmansdal. We are the former, eh, a beneficiary of Valmansdal. Give us the land back. They said, no, now the parliament have been interdicted. We have to wait until 2018. So I wanted to know after 22 years that people have been suffer, we are still going to wait another years for getting to their land, which has already been handed over to us. Now there comes this issue of the CPA and the trust. Those people, they don't understand what the CPA and the trust. The CPA is for communal land. The communal land is run by the chief tenancy and also the CPA people. But you cannot being as a landlord, say that you are also a communal land. It doesn't work like that. A communal land is only for the tenants, for communal people who are running by some other representative who are representing them. Those called the people under the communal land, which is the CPA. But when you talk about the trust, the trust is somebody who, which is the small holdings. Only person who has the title for that trust. Only the person who's saving the trust, the title deed per household. Then they can form a small group of trust. It's where by the trust come. But those people, they cannot own the communal land. The communal land is for chief tenancy and the tenants of Valmansdal. That's how it is. But now we are still sitting with a problem of we have to wait for 2018 because of the interdict that have been interdicted. I've got the proof here that I can show you that we have to wait again. While those people that they call themselves the landlord, they are sitting there, the land is just not working with them. They just leaving the land to be somebody to graze for that land. Now, people are sitting tired because now we go, we want to pillar to pillar. I like the, the person who are saying that there is a problem with this justice. Because now there is something like a fraudulent that is taking place in court. We want to say to the court, we don't want to see ourselves again to be in the criminal court because now we are not the criminals. They must create a court of which we call it a land court. Where always we have to talk about land. So that we can understand the language of the ESTA. ESTA which means the Extension of the Security Tenure Act. And when we talk the PIA, we talk of the prevention of the illegal occupant. It's how it works. And when we talk the farm dollars and the labor tax, it's how all those things are going to be, is a whole package of it. But we cannot talk about those things in the criminal court because we are not the criminal. We are talking about our belongings. Want our belongings to come back to us. That's how it works. And another thing, we are still having a crisis of the churches. The indigenous churches people, they don't have churches, they don't have sites. Others have been in, in the same Valmansdal. Because they will not be in the mission people, they can't give them their land back. You got lot of people who were, lot of churches which were in Valmansdal. By then, during all those years, 60s. Eh, year back there. Now all those people, they need also their land, even here in the municipality. If the people that go to apply for land, they are suffering. They take pillar to pillar, all those must go to there. You have to wait for four years being applying for a church land. In the meantime, you are worshipping in the dining room or in the kitchen or in the backyard. And it happened that if the pastor died there, there's no more in the church. Because there's somebody of the kids there will say that, no, we no more want that church again. We are no more, we are now we have turned to other churches now. So what about those people who are worshiping the same church? Now they destroy the people. So because of the people, they don't want to be destroyed. Let the people get at least their land for the indigenous churches. Let those churches have their land as a mission, as a missionaries were giving their land before. And let those churches have the fund to build those structures of their land. Because those priests, they are not getting any money. They don't get paid. But they are the people who are saving the community. They are the one who's trying to, to serve the community. But they don't get any fund, they don't get anything. But if you are hearing, if you are, who are listening, always there's a lot of money, there's a lot of scandals of money that are taking place. But those people, they don't get even a smaller cent. They even voluntarily to take their own houses to make them the churches for the people. So we say that to the government. Please, we plead as an indigenous church organization for the government to think about those indigenous churches, whether are they going to assist them or not? Or whether those people, they must join the South African Council of Churches or they'll fund something for those people. Thank you.
Is this not your phone? Thank you very much. This now marks the end of this session. And we thank everyone who has made inputs. We will take a break now and go for lunch. And the time is exactly 1 o'clock. At 2 o'clock, we must be seated back here. We start with the next session. We're going to open it up to the floor. You raise your hand, we know too you are given an opportunity to speak. At this point, I would like to thank you very much for the cooperation and the discussions that I've heard so far. And I want to take the opportunity to dismiss the panel that they can now leave and that we invite my colleague to come and make announcements about lunch. Thank you very much. See ya bo.